Order at 6:07. Hermosa Town Board Friday, Tuesday, June 18th. 2024, 6:07. Thank you. Ro Cal, Board of Trustees, Ro Cal Ferguson.
Here.
Henrickson.
Here.
Halsworth.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Coons here. Sorry, I answered for you. Thank you all for coming. I'm glad to see this many people in attendance. We'll do our best to work in a positive fashion for you and do the best for the citizens as we can. Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call for changes. Review of current items. I would like to add under 12A6. The oath of office for Elmer Clayholm, floodplain engineer. And also include Kent Haig's invoice in claims. Need a motion to accept as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Dan seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Special items, meeting protocol. Adopt a rule, special order. As you know, meeting conduct is raise your hand before speaking, wait to be addressed, respect all, limit comments to three minutes. I would like to request no slanderous remarks, name-calling, derogatory remarks, or inflammatory statements. Please stay on task when you contribute positive input on business subjects, please. If there's a lot of interruption, you'll receive a caution. Second caution, you'll stop talking on that subject. Third caution, you will not be allowed to speak any further during the meeting. Consent calendar. Approval of June 4th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I will.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second with Anna. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Conflict of interest declaration. There being none, we will move to claims. Review of payroll and claims. Motion to approve as presented or amended. It was amended. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the claims as entered. I'll second.
Linda seconds. Discussion. There being no discussion, all those in... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Just on Kent's, now that goes back to February then?
Yeah.
That is. February, March, and then jump into May and then June. And I know that's something that we were talking about, maybe getting monthly again.
Yes. Marie and I had a clear conversation about that.
Good.
There wasn't that much for that first few months from February to here, but yeah, if I'm going to be clear on a legal basis.
And I think it just helps.
Thirty days.
Yep, that way then a guy isn't...
Well, helps me too. And I know I've had a fun night. Don't keep up doing you guys.
But no, that'll be good. I know there were some changes and stuff going on in your office, so I thought it'd be awesome to see it all back again.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate you here.
Thank you, appreciate the beheading.
Okay. Anything further?
On, yes, I'm sorry. The gravel though, I thought last meeting we had approved Mr. Ferguson for the roads and stuff, but this one now you have gravel for fairgrounds also, so that was above and beyond.
That was around the end on the first go around. That's just, there were some left that was in piles. Kind of went back and double hit some of the potholes and spread the rest of that gravel out. It was piled on the end of the road for future maintenance, but the third round kind of tizzying on the road. So I put it on the road and spread it out.
The lagoon maintenance, what was that? Was that cleaning out that drainage here?
Working on that B drain, yeah.
And then spraying weeds is down there or?
The B drain took on a lot of dirt during the flood.
That's what I wondered.
And then it turned to sod, and so it's coming up very hard. It's hard to get at.
No, I...
It's a couple, three different methods. I went up, but it's floating.
Yeah, I figured that was the case. Thank you.
Mr. Styles?
Yes, we got to hear in detail what Chuck's input was, and we get to do that in every single meeting because one person asked for it. As a citizen out here, I'd like to hear in detail what the Kent Haigs in building was for.
In brief, there was a conference call with Gail and Dan for the Tiff District. Tiff District Agreement, Scope Project Plan. Conference call with Linda Kramer about complaint letters. Conference call with me. Letters, travel to, and attendance in meeting. Preparation for meeting. Prep for work session. Receipt and review of agenda. Receipt and review of email from Terry for mosquito spraying. Terry and I for contract spraying. Receipt and review of emails from Kelburn. Receipt and review of email from Terry, work session receipt and review of email from Terry for locates, travel to, and attendance. The meeting at Hermosa, receipt and review of agenda. No charge phone conference with Tom. No charge. Receipt and review of email from Jill for a cook issue email with board. Water boring receipt and review email from Jill. Paid election. Receipt and review of emails from Terry, letters to be sent. Receipt and review of email from Jill, one call issue, letter to Custer School District, letter to Floyd. Nineteen hours at 3:25. Costs incurred and the balance due.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment on the one that has my name on it. The main reason for that phone call was to ask Kent to be at the meeting because we had lost our attorney. And I felt that there was a need, a very strong need of having an attorney present in our meetings, so.
Yeah, and that's...
Yes, sir.
That was kind of what brought me back into the pool. Is that after visiting and having a conversation about getting what was going on at that particular time, then I talked to Vicki as well. Vicki being president of the board, it's only appropriate that she request that I be here. So that's what we did.
And I would have put Lynn to meet me to it, so there you go. Does that answer your questions, Jerry?
Oh, I just think if Chuck has to explain in detail, and I agree at every damn meeting, then so should you.
Okay. Thank you.
I totally agree. As a matter of fact, under bar ethics rules, detailed, reasonable detailed explanation as to what... For your time, why are you charging? It should be spelled out clearly.
One's good for one, it's good for one.
Proud of that.
Okay. We have a vote on claims, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Old business, Hermosa connects. Rick, are you speaking?
I will not bore you very long.
Okay. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was going on for this weekend, so I sent this, and I hope it all got in everybody's packet, had a chance to read it. And basically it gives an explanation of everything that's going to go on for this weekend. From our understanding, the reasons why we've made some changes and everything because of the success from last year. Really, I mean, basically that's what it was down to. We needed more space, we need to expand everything, and hopefully that is sufficient, as best I could explain it. I guess more than anything, I just wanted to see if any of you had any questions as to what was in the letter or if, you know, there's anything that needs further explanation.
My only comment is it feels sad. It saddens me that Hermosa is not making more money on sales tax. But I also understand you needed more room and the space was not made available to expand, so.
That was one of our big concerns.
Right.
And we made the best decision in the interest...
That's all you could do.
Of expanding the event.
Yeah.
As things change, as I spelled out in the letter, we will come back to you. We will do our very best to make sure that we get the town board more included in what we're doing and do our very best to make sure everybody understands, you know, where we're coming from. Full disclosure on that, so.
Greatly appreciated.
We had a quick meeting this morning. We have lost a couple of our vendors due to other circumstances, but we still have over 70 vendors, which is literally double what we had last year. And it just, it has grown more than we thought it was going to. And for an all-volunteer organization, we hope that you can appreciate that, and we're doing the very best we can, but we do feel very positive about what it is, and we hope it just makes sense for what we're doing. If there is any comments or anything else that we need to do something differently, come to me or one of the other members, or especially come to one of our meetings, and we'll do our very best because we're doing it for the community. That's all, that's our mission anyway.
My understanding is the food trucks are going to be over here on Second?
That is my understanding.
And then the majority of the rest is over at the community center, and then down at the Legion and the Catholic Church area?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
We are going to have one more meeting to verify all the spots and everything else before the weekend, based on all of the people that we have, all the vendors and food trucks and everything else, for a final placement of everything. But that's one of those last-minute situations. A lot of the work's going to be done on Friday as far as setup and everything, so.
Okay, for citizens, Second Street's going to be closed. Do you have the timeframe for that, Rick?
We are going to wait and see when Chuck brings the barriers and stuff that we'll set up. So I would say probably just, what would we say, Valina? Probably about 8 o'clock Saturday mornings when we actually put the barriers up and everything.
Yep, barriers up, and then I think the food trucks are going to start arriving about 9.
Yeah.
And then until after the races, we won't need the road closed past.
Until approximately what time?
Probably 3 o'clock.
And that goes to Whitney and Third, correct?
That is correct. Unless there is some change we need to make, but that's what was agreed to earlier.
And so you guys, anybody that needs to know, that's because they're having soapbox derby also, and that provides offload and pickup area for anyone participating.
That is correct. Yeah, because we don't want any box, soapbox derby folks running over four...
Nope.
Because some of these folk, soapbox derby cars are built for...
High speed.
High speed, yeah. I mean, no other vehicles could probably stand up to them from what I understand.
NASCAR's been looking great.
I wanted to enter one that looked like a train, but I was overruled. So anyway. Any other questions, and I'll let you get back to it.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good luck, you guys. Much success.
We expect to see all of you there in one form or another, so thanks much.
Okay. Abatement issues. I have not continued with them, and at this point I am giving my resignation as code enforcement because I will not write another complaint based on the fact we have too many board members or associates of the board with some connection or other that are non-compliant. Therefore, I am resigning from that committee. Moving on. Legal, Mr. Haig.
Since last meeting, a few of the things that we addressed, and I know there, at least one of them's on the agenda later. But based on my directive at the last meeting, I did issue, send out a letter to Custer School Board, for the Custer District. And with regard to the retention pond, that's not, that's not retention-ing things. Letting them know that any inundation of a neighbor's property is not caused in any way by a city or the town's water mains. That there were allegations of potentially leaky mains that were compromising the pond's ability to not overflow with, and we've done a thorough review of that. We found that there are no leaks. That whatever, they take measures immediately, and we'd like to see it planned implemented ASAP. And invited them to call me or the office to set up a time if they'd like to address the board as to what they are choosing to do. And also let them know that person or the folks that are literally downstream from them are getting a copy of the letter. Whereby, we've done our due diligence. We're advising that no flooding is the responsibility of the towns. Other than that, a few things have changed since that meeting with regard to particular scenarios. And so I have not issued any of the letters yet. Further, there was a request during the meeting, but then it kind of, the conversation kind of morphed different places. So a little unclear as to, and I think this probably needs to be the subject matter of a work session, as to how we want to proceed with that, with the ordinance, whether or not, and to what extent we require the user to be responsible for costs and cost of maintenance of water meters. So I think that about covers it from last time. That's all I got. Except later, later in here, it'll be addressed regarding the President, Vice President.
We need to accept the resignation of Mitch Johnson. Do I have a motion, please? Done.
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Mitch Johnson.
Do I have a second? I will second that. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Appointment of Kent Haig as interim town attorney with the oath of office to be given.
I'll make that motion.
Start it.
It's like Ronald Reagan, "Well, there you go again." Everybody's waiting to remember Ronald Reagan.
Oh, yeah.
So who gives you the oath?
Terry.
Terry does.
I had, I had the President on there.
Oh, okay.
And I have, and I'll attest to it.
What?
I have you as, I have the President giving it, and then I attest to it. Is that right?
Yeah. The President has the authority to vest people of authority.
I repeat your name.
I, Kent Haig.
Have been, having been appointed to the office of...
Interim Town Attorney within...
Thank you, go ahead.
For the town of Hermosa. Said county and state do solemnly swear that I will support Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinance of said town of Hermosa. And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of said office of Town Attorney.
Thank you, sir.
May Father and Son...
Yeah.
Did we go, we're done now? I think you already did, didn't you, instead of installing us Town Attorney? So you made a motion and seconded it.
Yeah, I don't know that we voted.
We made a motion. Within, although I already, I did vote.
Okay, we need to vote, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I get a little bit of that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Advertisement of Town Attorney position. Can I have a motion to enter into the advertisement of that position? Did you ever find out job description?
I did find, found on Rapid City's website, and I copied theirs. I got a copy, it was like... So what did I do? I have it somewhere, but I do have a... Sorry.
Dan?
Normally, if we had a copy of that, that would have been given to the board members and review it. If they all approved, there really wasn't a motion needed, it would just advertise and move forward.
Does anybody want to go through, or should we table this to next meeting and then vote on it? Because it is the city of Rapid City, it is not the city of Hermosa's job description. Mr. Haig?
If you'd like to direct me to review the qualifications there. Those things I have would be totally inapplicable to a third-class municipality versus first-class city. I'll be happy to review that and then come back with a recommendation.
Okay.
With a few different places to advertise, like the South Dakota Bar Magazine. Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anything further on the attorney position in and of itself as a whole? Other than you're going to be really kind to us, right, in the intro?
Of course I am.
Of course.
If I ever get anything wrong.
Okay.
One other thing I have on illegal, and we can address it when we get maybe to that section. But one of the things I wanted to point out in determining on the election of President and Vice President of the Board, just to bear in mind that South Dakota statute does not require a Vice President position. However, it is, it is the tradition here that it be a President and Vice President. Just wanted to point that out. Your only statute totally required to appoint a President.
Yes. I just didn't, I just believe there should be a vice in case of...
Absolutely.
God knows what, you know? And also so that there are another person in case somebody's out of town and a check needs to be signed. I think it's important to have a vice.
I think it's a good redundancy, yeah.
Okay. Anything else under legal? Need, okay.
So the letter to the school, you have not sent it.
I did.
You did send it?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of it?
Did Maria have a copy of the office on it?
I didn't get it. Well, I got your bill.
I would like to see that.
I'm sure you should have come in over email.
I, I didn't see it.
And when I say it was sent, she was going to send the, the letter to the school board and the neighbor via USMA, not email. But it was my understanding that she also sent email to here.
Okay, I can check. Maybe when we turn for a minute, I'll...
I might be able to forward it to you if not, that way we can just look at it before the end of the day.
I'm sorry, Mr. Styles?
I know this retention pond came up in the past, even before I was on the board. And the engineers who designed it went out and looked at it. Understand some of the concerns are that there's a pipe in the bottom that flows directly through. That pipe is a certain size. When I had my retention designed over for my campground, is that there is a pipe at the bottom direct pass through. And what that does is let flow go through just as fast as what that can go through, and then it builds up head. Then after it builds up head, then there was another slot where more could go out. So on the retention pond, the fact that you have a throttle on it, that is retaining the bat. That the flow doesn't get high enough, and like on mine in the three years I had mine in, I think only four times in those three years, it got, the flow got high enough that actually flowed full and got higher than the two pipe. So you might want to have your engineer look at that.
Okay. Dan?
And I understand what Mr. Styles is saying there, but I think our big concern is, is that even with that flow in a normal circumstance, that flow wouldn't be happening. What they had done is they've created a new channel for that spring, and that spring is constantly running, which is causing a hardship to the neighbor. And there needs to just be conversation on how to stop that problem or re-divert that problem to not have that circumstance affect the neighbor is what the purpose of this letter is and the direction, so.
But based on these comments, is there still, is the town still taking the position that it should be involved in?
I feel so, I feel, the only positioning I feel that we should be involved is that, number one, we went through and proved ourselves that it wasn't a water leak because what was originally, it felt so. Number two is just that there has been a voiced opinion from our public works and the landowner that there is a problem there and that the problem is existing. So I think number three is that the school needs to actively look at it. It will involve us undoubtedly because of the circumstances of us issuing a building permit...
Right.
Back in the day, and then circumstances have happened. So I think in them purposes, yes, the town will be involved in not finding a solution that's neighborly.
And I, and I would suggest that, like, just exactly like you said, Dan, that it's part of the permit process, that it's subject to the review of the town engineer, but not at the directive of the town engineer unless it's found to be deficient somehow.
Right.
Then you don't issue the permit. But to that extent, and the only extent, should the town be involved in that opinion.
Correct.
Mr. Styles?
Yes, I'd just like to cut a little comment on what Dan said. Dan said that they proved that there was no water leak. If we go back and look at what happened historically, there was a water leak. A main valve was busted up under the ground by the tanks. That was there. The water was defined to have total chlorine in it, which it wouldn't have had if it wouldn't have came from the city. So the city did, what happened is we didn't think we had a leak the first time they went around. So the city did, what happened is we didn't think we had a leak the first time they went around. And then after they did the sampling, the community did the sampling. It came back and said, well, there must be something. They bring people out and look further, and that's when they found the cup above. And then they did, like Dan said, it was taken care of immediately.
Has there been a flooding event on the neighbors since the repair?
Dan?
Well, since the repair, that's what we initiated, that we were at a higher loss in our water ratio, which we expressed to the school and expressed the conditions. Now we're at 1% of loss, so we know our circumstances have been controlled, which is what my conversation was. I was not, not admitting that we didn't have a leak, as when Mr. Stiles wrote this. And I was saying that we realized there was a problem, fixed that problem, and we still have a continuation of the water coming through, so.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is there, you said there's still a continuation of the water flooding the neighbors even after we fixed?
Correct.
Okay, so we have had an event, or maybe not a, maybe not a 300-year event, but there have been times when it's overflowed or leaked on there.
Well, and it's more that this spring they've developed, as what that flow-through pipe is, that was expressed, that that is a continuation now, it has found its way in. If that's the case, or there's also in that case, the underground piping itself is not sealed. And it was expressed to us that that water could find anywhere, any way into that pipe from that spring. It's going to find that least resistance of travel and continuation come from there. So it could be in that event or it could not be, but it needs to be examined, and the main thing is that the neighbor is refreshed.
I think a clarification, if the board's okay with a clarification of exactly what you guys just talked about. I was not aware that we had found a leak and we fixed it. It was my understanding that there was never a leak and we checked it and everything's good. But the fact that it's still continuing, the directive still remains the same, we got to figure out how to improve it, so.
Mr. Stiles?
I think the last time I got gone by that, it was dry coming out of that colder.
Cal, did you have something?
I just wanted to see if Chuck had anything, because I know he and I went down there, looked at it with Anthony. Did you have any comment on that, Chuck?
Sure. The engineer and myself and board member went there, looked it over, and...
Speak up, Chuck.
There were some recommendations made on how to curtail that water. We'd have to defer it from its actual flow right now. And Dan's right to appoint that once that storm drain system was put in, it is collecting spring water. And the problem with the retention pond is it's not retentioning. So even if the spring water was following that, it's going into that property and going out of that property. So probably the thing to do is to block that outlet that's in the bottom of the cylinder to make the pond retain. So depending on how long it takes to fill that retention pond, then that water has to be released somewhere. My proposal was to bore under Whitney Street and divert that water to the west side of the property, which there is already easement there. And that became a fairly expanding issue. So that's when it got reverted back to the fact that the town the responsibility of who it was. I talked to one of the board members, and they said, well, if the city engineer had approved the levy, the holding, and that is true. That system was set up for the drainage from the roofs and the parking lot, and that's what they exactly what it was designed for. So far, that has not been in play because we haven't had enough rain to make that happen. But what will happen is, once that retention pond fills up, then there has to be a way of dispersing that. And my suggestion was ditch piping, whatever, to get it to the creek. And the engineer was involved in that, and we kind of came to the same conclusion on what had to happen. The boring to get under that is roughly $4,000. And that's when the red flags went up to who is responsible here. So it was kind of, the board was kind of convinced that it is a school problem. Then the spokesman for the school said, well, your engineer approved the design. Well, yes, he did for rainwater, floodwater, not for spring water. And that's what they did, they developed that spring and it runs throughout. So that water has to be diverted all from this man's property. And I said, you've got two choices. You can have the water or not have the water. He said, if I've got the choice, I don't want the water. And I said, well, when it's 100 degrees and parched dry, you might want the water. But it hampers the cattle that are in there, number one, are walking in a slew. And it's also impossible to behave that property because it's so wet, it never dries up. And if you remember, back in the day, there was a horse that died over that same situation. Fell on the ice or blah, blah, blah. So we're still approaching on the landowner. And it's not going to stop until there is a valve put in, the retention pond, to stop the daily flow from going that way. Or divert some water on a daily basis around. There is easement that's in place that we can use to divert the water, but we have to get through the approach on Whitney Street. So that requires boring to get past each underneath.
Is it just a, is it just an approach apron, or is it under the street?
Well, it's not impossible, but not imperative, to open tough Whitney Street. So the boring is the most logical thing to do, that then that water can be diverted on a daily basis. And it will also retention that pond, which if it gets any water in it of any magnitude, then obviously it's going to have to be fenced and there's going to be mosquito control. And, you know, all things start to escalate after the fact. But the engineer has looked at it, and the most logical correction is we know what to do, because who's going to pay for it?
And it's not, the spring is in no way occurring on city property that we're aware of. It's mathematically simple.
It's actually on the west side of 79, it crosses under, it crosses this property, and it actually splits, and part of it's still most original. There's areas in town of six, seven feet, we got water. And, but it's very high in alkaledity, so it's not conducive to gardens or lawns or anything else. So we know the problem, and we know how to correct it, and it's a paper. Let's go to the bottom one.
Something I need to, I have a follow-up letter, maybe.
Okay. Mr. Stiles?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for their input, and I just wanted to make, I knew that Kent Hague probably didn't know that we had that water leak that we had to fix, and I just wanted to make sure he was made aware of it. Because that, potentially, he needs to know that, so it doesn't, he don't get a letter back from the school lawyer, and he gets caught, what?
Makes me, makes me less of a liar.
So I appreciate it.
Thanks for pointing that out, Terry. Okay, at this point, adjournment of meeting with old board members, do I have a motion, please?
Make the motion. I second that.
At 6:45. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Who's in here?
The air conditioning is on.
Is it?
It's kind of stuffy right now, isn't it?
Here, I sprayed a bucket, can you want to turn it, the temperature down a little bit on the side there? I'm starting to melt. Much hotter. Too many bodies in here. Retire. Sorry, Dan.
No, it was your evening, was it?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a strong statement.
I took mine home.
So this is the time and place for the installation of Shanna Harris, who's been duly elected to the Board of Trustees of the town of Hermosa. And Shanna, you'll stand and raise your right hand to take the pledge. You're both of office. Don't have to stand here alone.
Can I just read the document?
Right up there.
Oh, thanks.
Aye?
Aye, Shanna Harris, having been elected to the office of Board of Trustees within and for the town of Hermosa, and said county and state do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said town of Hermosa. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my said office of Board of Trustees.
So help you God.
So help me.
Can you sign this?
Sure.
Can I sign it to my honor?
Ready? I'll sign this and go to financial officer. This will add the office, both of office administered to Kilburn Coontz. Please stand and raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye. Kilburn Coontz, having been elected to the office of Board of Trustees, within and for the town of Hermosa, and said county and state, we solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the said town of Hermosa. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my said office of Board of Trustees. And you're welcome.
Yes.
I would like to thank Terry for her report on the canvassing. I thought that was very nice to have that. I appreciated that. And then do we not have to accept the canvas on a vote?
I believe you're correct.
I think so.
Just accept it as presented, I think.
I'm sorry, here.
The canvas, don't we have to accept that, vote on it and accept it?
When is a, somebody who's just worked city, their district offices, regional offices, so to speak. So the region or district isn't necessarily required to, other than ratify your canvassing as you've done through the process. But it certainly doesn't hurt to acknowledge and accept it, especially because you do have local offices that are only affected by that. So for that reason, I would say yes.
Thank you.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
I would like to second it. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Linda. Appointments, election of Board of Trustees offices.
Do you need to do the...
I'm sorry?
With code of conduct?
Oh, sorry. Now, it's going to be code of conduct. He's doing the code of conduct right now. Oh, you've got one there, okay.
So you want all the board members to sign this?
Yes.
And then I have Kent put it too.
Yes. Roll call. Hendrickson here, Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Calvary.
Here.
Shanna?
Here.
Thank you. Code of Conduct is being signed.
Isn't I supposed to sign that?
You need to sign it.
Billy Allen.
And Kent's going to sign it as well.
What?
And you'll sign it too.
I thought you knew it was a little rare.
I didn't know. I just thought it was your oath thing.
Do you need to pass this over to Dan?
Kent needs to sign.
Kent needs to sign.
Signs it first? Especially the order. All right. Guess it doesn't matter what the order is, right?
I just thought it was your thing.
Election of Board of Trustees offices.
Senator.
Yes, sir.
As in going into these, this next section of the agenda, I was just going to make everyone mindful, everybody mindful, that you can nominate yourself, you can vote for yourself, it's not a conflict of interest in this matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Aaron?
I'd like to nominate Vicki Hendrickson as Town Board President. But I also, my comment is, I would like to see that Vicki stay as President and Linda stay as Vice President, because neither one of them have had a chance to sit on, in this position for a year. And I know I can't make two, I don't know if I can make a nomination like that. Linda, stay as Vice, and Vicki be as President.
I think to make the nomination for each one separately as it comes in, is fine.
I would like to recommend Kramer for President.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second what?
Uh, the Kramer.
Well, actually, you made the nomination for me first, so you should is there a second on that one? I'll second it.
I misunderstood your question, I'll just.
What else?
I misunderstood your, your, your question or motion a minute ago.
Well, so I want, no, I want to make the motion that they both stay in the position they are in right now.
Correct. One of them. One at a time.
Well, yeah, that, but I mean, that's what I want.
Right.
Okay. Motion for Hendrickson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
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 Motion failed? Shanna?
Kent, when we're doing this process, don't you get all your nominations first before you vote on them? Or do you? I mean, you can second a motion, but don't you still want all of your nominations before you start voting on, so you know what all the options are?
You know, I, I think that's one way to do it, not necessarily harder.
Terry?
Yes, we follow the Roberts rules here, and Roberts rules is once there's a motion on the floor,
That motion should be addressed.
That needs to be handled.
Yeah, that motion needs to be addressed.
But is that just regular?
Right. Because, because what, what happens then? What happens if you, if you have a motion and it's seconded, then it's open for discussion.
Right.
And, and then there's a vote taken on that particular one.
I just thought it was different.
But not in, that would be a much more cumbersome process if you were like saying, okay, now we have as nominees, we have this one, this one, and this one. I, I think to handle it one at a time is, is best.
Once your elections are different.
We have a motion for Kramer. If I have, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's, there's a motion and then a second, by count, right?
Yep.
And is there any discussion on that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Once your elections are different.
We have a motion for Kramer. If I have, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's, there's a motion and then a second, by count, right?
Yep.
And is there any discussion on that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion carried. Motion for Vice President, congratulations.
Thank you.
Motion for Vice President.
I nominate Vicki Hendrickson for Vice President.
Sir, doesn't the President take over now? Before anything further goes forward, that's the way we've done it in the past. And once a new President has been put in position, they will resume their position now. She will begin to run the rest.
I think you're correct, because they're, they're now the Presiding Officer.
And that's what we've done.
Whatever.
Go ahead and assume the gavel.
You want to change shares?
Yeah, that would be a problem.
And chairs, yes.
That's Linda's own personal chair.
Yes, it is, I brought it myself. Alright, now that I got my paperwork all together. Thank you, I will take motions to adopt a new Vice President or a Vice President. Donna? I nominate Vicki Hendrickson as Vice President. Motion's been made to, for Vicki.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion failed? I would nominate, um, Calburn to be Vice.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Calburn to be Vice President. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Um, next is the assignment of subcommittees. As legally, the Vice, or the Finance Committee is always the President and Vice President. That would be Cal and I. Water Committee. I would like to ask Vicki if she would like to chair that.
Due to circumstances, of the scenario and previous precedences, I will decline.
Would you Vice Chair it?
Nope.
Alright.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would ask that the floor or the Chair please advise that maybe wait till the next meeting to do your committees, give it some thought, and the President and Vice President be the ones to handle in committees until the next meeting and give me time to do it. That is legal and able to be done.
Thank you for your suggestion, Vicki.
In the last, as many meetings as I've been at, it's been appointed that, on the night of the appointments, and I think it needs to stay there.
Kent, any comment on that?
No, again, it goes back to what has been the tradition of this Board. And tradition, not statutory requirement. So both points are well taken. There's no harm in having a committee, a Chair and Vice Chair be appointed after the next meeting. It might give the opportunity for the President and Vice President to discuss it. Now, with that said, if tradition dictates that it has been the same night, totally up to you as Presiding Officer.
Thank you. Shanna?
I don't think this is necessarily a tradition that has to stay, I think it's what works best for the two of you, as President and Vice President, if you want to take some time to think about it. I think best decisions are made by thinking about them, so I have no problem if you wait.
Okay. I guess I'll ask first, Vicki, is there any committee that you would be willing to be Vice or Chair of?
No. I will decline all at this point.
Donna, how do you feel about this? I'm not real sure how I feel about it. With that being said, I think that, um, Cal, would you be willing to discuss this and go over this and we'll handle it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay. We will, uh, put this item pending until the next meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. That brings us to engineer. Oh, no, excuse me, just a minute Anthony, Vicki?
I would also request that my response be recorded in the minutes and published.
Alright, noted, thank you.
Do you want a motion to leave it pending, or do you just leave it pending?
I'll raise my hand.
Can just leave it pending.
Leave the appointment also pending? You can leave it pending.
Just leave it pending, thank you. Alright, now Anthony, thank you very much. Nope? Oh, that's right, that was the added on one. Elmer, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget you.
Yeah, it was nice to be referred to as the added on.
Elmer, are you willing to keep your position as Flood Plane Administrator? Don't take that as a yes.
I've tried to count the number of different engineers and Board members and the like that I've
Been through?
Suffered through, suffered with me. And yes, I will.
Thank you.
Be glad to.
Thank you very much.
You want to answer? Aye.
Elmer Claycombe, having been appointed to the Office of Flood Plane Administrator within for the Town of Hermosa, in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said Town of Hermosa. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of said Office of Flood Plane Administrator.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Anthony.
Wait till you say it twice.
Please, it's Anthony. Thank you, Rick.
So I have one item on the agenda, and then, um, I want to ask permission to to do some other things as well, um, just to investigate at no cost. So the first one is what you asked me to do a week ago, uh, which was to prepare, to study obviously all the documents. And so I can kind of tell you what I've been doing since last meeting. Cause I've been talking to a lot of people, trying to get as much information as I can, historical information, get caught up, and so, um, just to give you kind of a rundown of how that went. So I spoke to our, uh, review engineer for our, um, Lagoon project, Suzanne McKinnon, I thought that'd be a good, uh, place to start. I have our drawings up, and my design, design supplement to previous engineers' designs, so that they can kind of see the, how the design transformed into what it is today. And, um, and then I asked her who I should talk to, to get the background as who was reviewing the water and sewer going to Long Cattle. And she told me it was Neil Conda. And so I got, she gave me Neil Conda's email, I emailed him. He called me, I don't know, maybe two hours later. It was a pretty quick response, I was surprised. He basically gave me, uh, I was probably on the phone with him for about an hour. So he was very generous with his time, and explained to me that, um, to, the long, long story short, um, the water is, um, an eight inch water main going basically from our system at the Dollar General up to the boundaries of Long Cattle. It's completely approved, uh, hasn't been. And they just need to do, um, the pressure testing, um, again. Because they, there were some issues with the pressure testing results, and think, and it could be something related even to pressure in our system, right? So, may not have anything to do at all with, um, with the line itself, but just with pressure getting to that point in our system. Um, so that's kind of the water. The sewer, um, is also approved with some conditional items. But, you know, just frankly, before I even became an engineer in Hermosa, I had heard about that sewer. So, um, pretty much everyone has, in my, in my profession, so. So I had a, most of the conversation with Neil was about, about that. He actually, while we were talking, like did a huge data dump of everything that DNR had into my file, my shared folder with DNR. And, um, basically it was like, there was like 11 different back and forth correspondences, and gave me all of them. And I honestly haven't read them all yet, but he told me to read them when I have free time. I mean, I will, and I, uh, I think the, the point there is, um, the Billover Creek, um, it, it needs to have been done with thought into kind of water flow through that, that section of the dry creek. I know it's a, it's a dry, um, riverbed. But that's only because there's a stock dam on the other side of Paramount Point. Um, and actually, if you look at the aerial, uh, there's a lot of, you know, different gulches and gullies that feed that, that, uh, stock dam. When that dam finally lets the water loose, um, EOT has obviously determined they needed a 12 foot by 8 foot culvert underneath the highway to accommodate that flow. What I would not want to have happen is, is that sewer is in, in service, and full of sewage, and it breaks. And then that floods down the Billover Creek right into town. So I would like to, in my proposal, I propose to cut out a section of that that's the Billover Creek and put in a siphon. A siphon doesn't require a pump station, it's the cheapest option. Rapid City, all of Rapid City sewage goes through a triple barrel siphon into the treatment plant. So, and I've actually, I'm friends with a treatment plant operator there. His son is my, my son's favorite teacher at Central, so we, we know each other. And I asked him, is there any maintenance issues, can we be concerned about, you know, is it giving you trouble? And he said, that's the last, the least thing that we have trouble with in Rapid City, we've never had the issue of the clogging or, or anything like that. And then at Benish, I talked to my peers in, in the company, and, um, Topeka, Kansas, um, office, they just completed one, and so we have like a really good idea, it's very similar. And then we've had some good experiences with those in Nebraska and Kansas, so. I think that, um, moreover, it's, it's, it's just an issue, we want to be done with that sewer line, not have to ever return to it, try to work on it again, and just, every day we spend, it gets more expensive, so. I want to be complete with that, um, take it out to bid, um, pick a contractor, have it all completed by Christmas. I think it's possible and doable. At least select a contractor by Christmas, right? We're going to have several bids, bids going up at that time, so I'll be in communication with contractors, you know, inviting them to bid and stuff. So I'm going to say, hey, while you're bidding on the Lagoon, please bid on this. Same kind of work, and, um, and then there's, it's really almost not even worth mentioning, but there's a small section, just as you leave the property line of the Dollar General that needs some perlite pack grade encasement, just because it's a little bit shallow. But it's a really, that's a really easy job, so we'll just throw that in the, as a bid item. And so that's pretty much my proposal, um.
Can you give me a, a cost estimate? And I, I'm not expecting you to have
Oh, for construction?
For that, yes.
So, um, usually we go like $120 a foot, and it's 200 feet, so and then you have the two structures on either side, so I hate to bias people that could be telling a contractor what we're thinking, but, um, but I definitely would say that, um, it's less than $100,000, I would say.
Alright. Dan?
I understand where you're going with that Anthony, but with them too, didn't they discuss the approval that they've already approved with the foam, with the anchors, with the waterproof manhole covers? And at that rate, I mean, we can get by at a very reasonable cost, and acceptable. And that portion of the pipe that's going through that Billover, Billover has never, ever, even in the flood of '07, uh, had any washout in that area, because of the grass and the circumstances put. The way it was designed with that concrete pipe, uh, through that section for the reinforcement, and then insulated around that concrete pipe also, with that side view and cutting of that. And as many times as we went through them letters of approval, the final approval, I would like to see if you're going to do your amendment, also amendment to have the foam put in, the waterproof lids which are already approved, and have that as an amendment too, so we have that cost also. Because the state is approving that portion and approving that fix right now. That's all we have to do to get that line up and going, instead of removing any of that.
So I asked about that, I said, uh, Neil states approved this design. And he said that, uh, there's a difference between approving and design, because it meets the because it meets the absolute minimum.
Bare minimum.
Bare minimum. And one that's going to last for a longer time. And it isn't just washout. You have freestyle. And what happens is you're still in the frost zone, even if you have that insulation. What it does is it actually keeps that, it actually, it compounds the frosting and will cause the frost heat to be worse. And so what you want to do is, you want to make sure that you're below scour. You want to make sure that your pipe won't be under any kind of action. So we want static, right? Not dynamic, because it's plastic. So, you know, plastic, you work on a piece of plastic long enough, it's going to crack, right? And so I just, I don't think a contractor, a good contractor would be comfortable putting something like that in or fixing as that and putting their name on it. I wouldn't want them to do that because, you know, they're kind of then putting a guarantee. I mean, they have a construction bond. So they have a performance bond, a construction bond, and, you know, a reputation. And at the same time, I mean, I've designed these before and I designed a sewer main to pass through a river, a creek, you know, to me. So it would behoove me to do it the way I've always done it as a professional, not just to the very, 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 very minimum, potentially allowable. And I think the state was just pretty much worn down by everything. And so they kind of, and I think that's a second point. Yes, it may cost us money to fix this, right? And like I'm saying, it will be fixed and it will be done right. But it also restores and repairs the reputation that the town has with DNR. Because they look to us and say, okay, they've got a crew up there that are going to do things, not just to the bare, bare minimum and kind of, they're going to do it the way you want it to be done professionally, right? And then they'll trust us and restore that trust so that we can ask for loan forgiveness, right? Because we have a $2.8 million SRF loan for water that's been approved. And I'll get to the discussion on that. And they did not close the door when I'm talking to them about, if we were to kind of restore that relationship, would they reconsider loan forgiveness? Which means they give more free money to us. And so I think you've got, you've got to kind of look a little bit at the big picture there and kind of tell them, hey, we want you to do things for us. We want you to give us, you know, grant money that you have sitting there. This is a kind of token thing that, and, you know, if you take that approach with that water and sewer extension, just as a general approach, you kind of, you kind of let people know, especially like residents know, that, hey, we want to get things done so that we can negotiate the best possible opportunities for the town, not just with DNR, but with rural development and all the other institutions, right? So I think that's one of them, just based on like hour I was on the phone with our reviewer. When I told him what I would do and what the Topeka office would do with that section of main, he said, that's exactly what we would like to see. So I think I kind of would like to stick with that because, and try to get the, I'll value engineer it. I'll do as much as I can to keep that priced to the absolute lowest and have a successful bid where we have competitive prices, right? But I think, you know, going the other way, I think it's not going to, we're going to just constantly be up against a brick wall, you know what I mean?
And when do you need that decision, Anthony?
If you want it done right away, I mean, we need to have it right away.
And Jerry, you had your hand up?
Yes, I agree with what Anthony's saying. I also in the past have had long, extensive conversation with Anthony. And that is the bare, bare minimum they would like to see. And some of the comments that Anthony gave me was, they were just tired of it. I mean, we spent a lot of money on legal, maybe 25% to 30% of what the fix could be, maybe even close to 40% of what the fix could be. And then he's talking the dollar, you know, $100,000. Water's going to flow down there, and it's going to flow hard, and it's going to erode it away, and it's going to wash it out. Is it going to do it today? Is it going to do it tomorrow? Maybe not. They might not do it for 10 years or 20 years. But when it does do it and washes it out, that $100,000 is a drop in the bucket for what it's going to take for doing all the cleanup. And that $100,000, like he says, we need to, we need to get that good relationship back with the state again, so they want to give us money.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, and I, you know, look at the whole circumstance also where we went through the conversations with DNR and the past. And we can go round and round and round and push in the fault and point finger on circumstances how it developed.
But we're not going to-
You've got to get loan grant money for this, and it doesn't cost us a user fee to go that route. I know with going with a lift station or pump station, you know, we had difficulties with floodplain and being able to be approved because we did ask that question. And there wasn't approval in that floodplain area there. It was also made in understanding of Billover. The Billover doesn't run but in rain events, melt-off events, and that type of situation. It's not constant. And the water coming through that pipe, of course, is warm when you hit the development. And so there's a difference there in too, was expressed to us in the flow and the ratios and what's coming down. But I'm not against looking at what Anthony's doing and saying, and building relations, and coming back if we can get grant money and they'll work with us on that situation where it doesn't cost our user fees even more cost our user fees.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Cal?
I just, I'd like to echo what Jerry said. I mean, I agree that we do need to take into consideration that even if it is an unlikely occurrence for most years, we should harden that pipe and, you know, I think we should aim towards also using that pipe, you know? And so it makes sense that we do harden it with the eye to maybe use it in the future and try and get some of our other projects going. So I would just like to say that.
Thank you.
So I think what I hear everybody saying, you know, everybody in the room, is that there's, in theory, there's nothing really wrong with getting that project shovel-ready, right? But at the point of expending the money for, let's say, a contractor to do the work, the town would probably like to, so to get it shovel-ready, I would design it, submit it to the state, to the same guy, Neil Conda. The state would then say, hey, you know, the town wants to do this. And at that point, what I'm understanding is the town will say, will want you to say, hey, look, this is what we want to do. It's going to cost this much money, is our cost estimate. Can you help us out? Can you give us grant money for it? Do you have some pool of money, some bucket of money somewhere that could help us? Because this is what it is. And that amount of money is not very big. Saying, I just got an email today from them saying that they're reviewing $680 million worth of SRF projects. So they have, they've got money, you know? So it's not that they're broke. So that's what I'm hearing. So I don't know if I'm taking that in well or-
Shannon, how do you feel from what you've heard tonight and what you knew in the past?
I think it's smarter to spend a little bit money now than to have issues down the road, even 20, 30, 40, 50 years, whatever. And there's a busted crap, plastic pipe that, you know, our generations need to deal with and causes by then what? $2 million worth of damage down the road? When it could just be a matter of an up, you know, just an upcrease in price to assure that doesn't happen? I think it's worth it, from what I've heard.
Thank you. Donna, how do you feel?
I feel that we should go ahead with fixing the situation. I mean, even if it doesn't happen for 10 years.
Or 100.
Yeah, it's still there. It's still, we've done the right thing. And I, you know, I think it's time to move forward and do some right things.
Okay. Vicky?
I'd like to see it move forward and be repaired in the correct fashion as per our engineer.
You got your answer.
Thanks, Lyndon, for asking all of us. I appreciate it.
Do we need to make a motion?
We can make a motion on that effect?
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion that we ask Anthony to get us a shovel-ready project estimate and that he also investigates funding options for it. Think that covers it?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You got it. Thank you.
Before I sit down, I wanted to ask permission, it's not a spending item, it's just permission from the board, because I don't like to call people without permission, to call KND perforators in Upton, Wyoming, and ask them to give us a proposal to re-perforate our well number two, to run a log on it, and then to pump it for a bit with the re-established capacity. Because then I can do testing on that water. It's going to have more of the, what we don't want in it. But that's how I'll be able to design the WRT. Because we want to design the WRT for our re-established capacity, not our smaller capacity. So one component of that, the testing part, I would do. And I would also supervise their activity. And what I do is I'll make a second proposal that'll be for me to do that. And then also to conduct a water model and facilities plan update like we discussed on our water system. So that we have a full picture of our issues with the water system after that. And I just need a proposed proposal. So just a vote, it's just, all right, maybe it is a vote to allow me permission, but I think any board member could probably authorize me to look into something.
How do y'all feel about that? We might as well. Cal?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, Vicky? Okay, Donna? Shannon? Got it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Anthony, for everything you do for the town. Thank you, sir.
Be safe out there. All right. That brings us to planning and zoning, which we don't have anything. Then law enforcement, abatements and complaints. In your packet, there was a marshal's log, a Custer County log. And Donna, do you have anything to add?
Well, I would just like to say that, I don't know, we've seen several deputy sheriffs around town, which I think is very good. But maybe the last time I talked to Marty, it helped him. As I told him, we do not have the money. And I feel that they should be trolling our town for us. And I've seen two or three, four different times of the day. So I think that's fabulous.
Connie?
I saw them several times today on several different streets, actually, so.
That's wonderful.
Jerry?
Three or four days ago, they, I seen them going around and they were going up all the streets. It may have been Saturday or Sunday or something like that. And that's the, they're showing a lot of visibility. So thank you, Donna, for going up and talking about them.
Well, I didn't, I talked to him on the phone, but I was kind of, you know, I was kind of blunt to the point. And I said, you know, we are in the eastern part of the county, but we do deserve to have some protection over here. And I know they've had, I was surprised on the log that they have filed. So they are around.
I've noticed them also. And thank you for your phone call. I don't know if that's what helped, but it didn't hurt, obviously.
I'm thinking it did.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you very much for that. Abatements are on the agenda. And I would like to take the advice of our attorney from the meeting, I don't know, a meeting or two meetings ago, where you suggested that we sustain those or suspend those for a moment, for, I guess forever, all the ones that are done, and we'll start over. I think that possibly we can come up with a plan. And Cal and I will discuss it and see what we can do as far as getting something put together and going forward with this.
Yeah, I think one caveat, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ken.
One caveat on that is that, hey, it needs to be underscored that if it's not a life safety-
Life safety.
-better, psych triangles, those kind of things, to proceed with that abatement ASAP.
Okay, very good, thank you. Donna?
Well, there's some yards that need to be abated now.
Okay.
There are some very bad yards. The yard ordinance said that was a three-day, you know, it's a faster process because it is the mosquito and snake issue. And so we don't have to put as much time into waiting to get that done. And I would say that we should handle those issues and like Ken says, any of the, anything that is health, safety issue.
Vicky?
Somewhere along the line, you people have got to come up with some consistency that what's fair for one is fair for all. And that is not happening. You cannot, in my opinion, go through that abatement book or ordinance book and say, oh, I like this one, but I don't like this one, so let's work on this one, but not this one. They need to be straight across the board. They've been written, they need to be enforced, they need to be followed. Otherwise, take the book, put it on the shelf, take the thousands and thousands of dollars that has been spent on them, and just put it away and leave it alone. And we can look like another town close to here in short order. It's just not fair, it's not right. Those of us that adhere to the ordinances, you know, we have people that pay for dog licenses, people that don't. How do you justify it? We have people that mow and maintain their yards, we have people that don't. How do you justify it to them? Either be fair and consistent, or don't do one. Not even one.
Thank you for your opinion. Joan?
I would simply suggest that you do the same thing you did with the vendor ordinance. As your town changes, as your population changes, as your community changes, so do the ordinances need to be changed.
I agree.
So put it on the list for the fall, review that ordinance. And just as you did with the zoning, put it on hold until you can review and change your ordinances that you feel are inadequate right now.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
My comment is if you're going to not require a five-foot bush out in front of your house, and a five-foot fence, and you have a 10-foot fence and a 10-foot bush, then you can't really go, like Vicky was saying, you can't go and tell somebody else their grass is nine inches too tall. On that note, I will, the other note, is if you guys do decide to go ahead and if you are riding up grass, Hermosa connects as a program in there where money's been donated by businesses in the community, that if someone actually can't afford it, or at this point in time, they're, they can't afford it, but they can't do it themselves because they're crippled, there's people out there that want to make money doing it, so.
Very good, thank you. I did remember the Hermosa connects had that fund, and we appreciate that. And it needs to be put out there so the public knows that also.
But I asked them about that fund the other day when I went to the meeting. And they said, well, you know, they were kind of waiting until fall. Well, fall is too late to have yards mowed. Those yards need to be kept up now. So what does a person have? I never did really get an answer. What does a person have to do in order to get an older person's yard mowed? What does a person have to do in order to get an older person's yard mowed? How do they handle this? And I did not
Get an answer?
I did not get a full answer on that.
Okay. Well, thank you for asking, Donna. Jerry?
I've been, I was in the meeting where Donna was, but also been in other meetings. And I think if, when someone gets written up, and their reply back is, "I just can't do it," then that needs to be, that, "I cannot do it. Here's a write-up, I cannot do it, I can't afford it, I can't do it myself because of health." That needs to be submitted to Hermosa Connects.
Okay.
And then let them work on it, because that money was put there for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Trina?
I just want to say that I appreciate the work that's been done on this. And one of my neighbors got a letter, and did a great job, and it just made me feel proud as a citizen of Hermosa, to see that yard cleaned up. And so, I appreciate, I know it's a stressful conversation for all kinds of reasons, but, you know, as we move along, I look forward to, you know, more people being assisted or concerned about it.
And that being said, I'll say quickly that, you know, citizens can always call up to the office and say, "I'm sorry, I'm out of town for a week," or, "I, you know, I broke my toe and I can't do it for a couple of weeks," and tell us why, if there's a good reason for it. And we're not trying to be tyrants about it. We're not trying to be tyrants, so... Dan?
And I just want to say, you know, I don't think the ordinances definitely need to be put on the shelf. And I think the whole thing of what Joan said is a very good point. The ordinances are in a good fashion, in a good shape, and a good position. This process is followed in how they're issued, and how they're put out. Is where a lot of the circumstances were deviated. And that's why I think the review process would be a very good refresher. Can be reviewed, and go through, and oversee it all, and look at it in a good position.
Thank you. Trina?
And, you know, we might want to contact the Boy Scouts too, because they're, you know, looking for community projects and stuff.
All right. Chuck, you had a comment? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I've had my hand up three times.
On the subject or other subjects?
I've been involved in these abatements. And procrastinating over what you're gonna do, the grass is still growing.
Yes.
So consequently, you might have done this job for $30, and this grass has got so out of hand from procrastinating on what you're gonna do, that it's full-blown where it's $100. Because it has tripled in the size since you originally looked at it. And by not doing it immediately upon request or complaint, it gets out of hand. And what comes into play there is, the person that's cutting it either takes the rap that you're gonna do it for 30 bucks, or it ballooned into a $100 deal. So, it's important that when the issue comes up, get it done now.
The citizens are always welcome to come up here and file a complaint. And that will make the process go forward. And the complaints can be refiled by anybody for any of the subjects that we have discussed and had on the list later. Feel free, and at that time, we will talk about the process, the process of how it will be handled, but it will be handled. Any further comment? Shannon?
I just want to say there's, when you talk about procrastinating the ones that need mowed, it's pretty obvious when you drive by, you don't need to, you know, if it's something you have to get up and measure, it's probably okay. But if you look at it and think snakes, it's probably not okay. And they probably need a letter. And that's where the health and safety. And I definitely think it should be on a work session to go through that ordinance and, so that we're not picking this or that, or not enforcing that or that. Definitely.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay. Cal?
I agree that the ordinances should be looked at. But to echo Chuck's comment, you know, the grass is still growing, and we do have a complaint process in the ordinance already, and so that, you know, we don't have to wait until the, after the work session or until after we decide what the process going forward is gonna be. We can still follow the process as laid out in the ordinance in 9110 for, you know, to kind of...
The health, safety.
Right, and, you know, so, like I said, anybody can submit one and everything like that. So, if anyone sees some grass or anything like that that needs to be taken care of, then obviously, let's do that, and then we can look at the process going forward.
Kent?
One thing that, based on what you had mentioned earlier, that, that meeting, again, was three meetings ago, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
And so, yes, the grass has gotten, continued to grow, bushes have continued to grow. And the, my suggestion at the time of suspending any action on those pending complaints was meant to be a very short suspension of activity in order to demonstrate or address whatever people were here and upset about. People were upset that they were being singled out, whatever it was, I don't know. But one of the things that, or among others, that was a recurring theme is that whether or not it was a fair process, whether people were being singled out, all that kind of stuff. And you guys have a tough job to continually demonstrate and go above and beyond to demonstrate their good faith. And so, when you have a very proactive thing, and I would say is a proactive thing, that in this case Vicki did, even writing handwritten notes, was a very constructive, very positive thing for the community. However, just because she was anywhere near it, it had an undertone to some people that it was not fair. It either is or it isn't. Either grass is above the illegal limit or it's not. So, but my main goal was to diffuse the pitches, you know, the pitchforks and shovels that night in having an uproar, whatever it was. And sometimes, like, I always think historical aspects, but Hoover or FDR declared a bank holiday. So, because there was a run on the banks that was gonna happen, that was starting to happen on Friday, he declared the following Monday to be a bank holiday, and that was enough to have everybody get their sea legs and address it the next day without things falling apart terribly. But, so it was kind of that thing. Kind of this, let's see it, let's take a breath, let's look at it. Is it or isn't it that, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen? If you got a problem, fix it. If you aren't gonna fix it, we will. So, some of that I think needs to proceed. Therefore, my point being is, I get long-winded sometimes. My point being is that it was never my suggestion to suspend it indefinitely, but suspend it for that evening, look at it, is there an issue? Is it a real issue? I'm sure it is, then address it. But address it quickly.
Okay, thank you.
In these letters that you always mail out, do you ever say, you know, "Please contact the town office so we can direct you to some help with organizations that will help you instead of finding them and have you ever put in the town newsletter how tall your grass should be?" And so, I mean, I'm sure not everybody comes up here to see what your ordinances are.
Correct.
And this week, could you do that?
I believe it has been done in the past. I don't know if it was done this year.
It's been a few years, I think it's a very good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
We just put it on the back of our bill, so at the beginning of spring.
And it was there too. Good idea. Jerry?
Yes, I'd kind of like to echo what Mr. Hagan said. It is a tough job for you guys up there. But it's also a responsibility of every single citizen, whether you're on the board or you're not on the board, that when something comes down, and what Vicki sent out was very informative, it went, had the, what the compliance had to be. I didn't have to go and, "Oh, you're out of compliance." I didn't have to go someplace else and find that information. All I had to do was read it. And once I read it, I knew I was out of compliance, because it was only supposed to be five feet, and I have to reach the top of my bushes like this. So, I complied. And that's what every single citizen should do. And then the lady back here that felt pride in that, everybody can have pride in. But when that don't happen, when not everybody reads the ordinance and complies with it, that's where the issues are.
Vicki?
And if you remember, the six people on the list that complied, I complimented that night. And I told them how much I appreciated them falling in line and taking care of the issue without making further issue. And it looked so nice for everyone that did. And furthermore, I did not go around and go, "Well, I like you and I don't like you, so I'm gonna rake you up, but not you." I don't pay attention to anybody's name or otherwise, never did.
That's enough.
That's all I'm saying. I've written myself off.
Excuse me? Thank you?
No.
Excuse me. So, I'll add this to this statement and to this comment. Of course I will. I have that right, as everybody does. Please. I believe that the ordinances need to be looked at. I believe that there's part of that ordinance that is wrong. I believe that I should be able to have a 10-foot lilac bush in my yard if I do choose so. I agree with the grass issue. I agree with a lot of the other issues. But as far as complying automatically, without question, I don't necessarily agree with that. If you were told to jump off a 100-foot building, would you do so? No, I'm not taking that question. I'm just saying, any one of us. I think that questioning the rules and the regulations is a good thing. I think that making sure that they are properly written is a good thing. And I believe that in this case and every other case, I had the right to file my appeal on my lilac bushes. Yes, I am one that got one. I still have not cut them, except for the branches that I wanted to cut anyway. I am not done yet, and I will get more done. But I believe that that ordinance needs to be looked at. And I don't believe that I'm the only one, because I'm not the only one that did not comply with those letters. I just want to say, like Kent said, if it was three weeks ago or three meetings ago that this discussion was taking place, and nothing has happened since then. We did have a work session, we argued about it for two hours, and still, nothing got done. So, because of that, I believe we better re-look at this. If we can't make a decision within those two hours and the other two hours, or four hours, or six hours that has totally been spent on this particular subject in these meetings, then we need to re-look at it. And that's my opinion, and I'm ending this subject in this part. Thank you very much. That brings us to Public Works, A 355 Main Street. Boring project. What do we have for that, Chuck?
That is going to take place tomorrow. We had a couple little glitches in the situation, and obviously, I have to work pretty closely with them with their schedule. I located another six forum today. And so, they still have a lot of work to do in town, but they're working this in. This was never a huge, huge priority, but it was something that had to get done. I will dig down and tap the six-inch main, and they will bore two of that receiver hole, and pull the pipe in. And it's taking longer to physically dig it up and tap it than the whole project's gonna be. I mean, these guys are very good at what they do, and they have excellent equipment, and it's very precise. They're very impressed. When they pick a target, they hit it, whether it's across the street or up the hill, or whatever. I've witnessed their work in there, and they're very good at what they do. This is minimal disruption and damage. I've seen where they've been in some areas that they just throw the alley or the street or whatever, hold to the hill. And the controversy is going to be when this stuff settles or changes, and these people have gone back to Minnesota and took a big check in the bank. They're not coming back. So, I've been working with them pretty diligently on the cleanup and restoration of what they've done. We've had this experience before, when contractors come in from out of town and made a hell of a mess and left. The previous company that was in had left a lot of this. And they've dropped to their attention. And the problem we've run into is that Midco is direct competition of Rushmore Telephone. Rushmore Telephone was pressed for years to get high-speed internet in here. And when Midco was seeing the opportunity, they pounced on it. So, we're duplicating everything. And the problem of it is, when they come in and they run the main line, there is, I can't even begin to tell you, but I'm guessing there's been somewhere in the vicinity of 100 locations. Well, when you double that process, now they're back putting the drops into all of these houses. So, you're going back and relocating the relocates. And I get calls all hours of the day and night. These guys, when they get done, they go to their motel room, get on the computers, and call in the one call. So, I get a call at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. Not an emergency, but hopefully, within the next three, four weeks, this is all gonna be over. I mean, we've had a massive amount of locations. I mean, there is a folder of this thing. So, I'm just kind of reiterating on all the boring that's going on all over town. And it has been duplicated two or three times because of the push come to shove and the competition. So, they've agreed to do this boring for us at a reduced rate and minimal damage. And that's very important. We're gonna have an open cut in Fourth Street, just east of the school, lined up with that alley. That has to be done in order to make the wet tap, which means the water will not get shut down. It will be tapped live to minimize any interruptions or anything. There's gonna be very few people that are going to be interrupted with this process. Hopefully, we can get it done one day.
We need to notify those people that will be impacted.
Well, I have, and I've also notified the fire department, or in the process of, because if that street or alley is blocked, they need to know that. We have a situation, but we have a fire head that's found that everybody in the world has been using it, and it's broken. So, I'm going to have to try to get repairs to fix it. I've also contacted the fire department, because the procedure is to bag that fire. So, not only the fire department, but the general public knows it's not in operation. And that has been done. Anything else on the board?
Only that I would like to say that, for those that don't know, the boring is on 355 Main Street. This discussion was at the last board meeting. This has been an issue, the underground house next door to it. of the underground house next door to it. We have discussed it on and off for many months, and there was a motion made and seconded and voted on to complete the work at our cost. And that is why there's been a change from last time's meeting, for anybody that didn't know that. I want to make sure that you do know that, that it was already voted on in a previous meeting, and so that is why we are handling it. Okay? Dan, you had a question?
Yeah.
And then also in that motion, it was to, we'd asked Mr. Ferguson for a cost on his end. We got a cost for the boring, but we never got a cost on his end, for what he was in charge to dig that up and do it. And that was part of the motion.
Okay. So we will need that also then, just with it being in the motion?
Yeah. It's going to be very similar, because the other things have been done. It'd be a time and material thing.
Okay.
How much? Well, it depends on how long it takes. The rate is in the pact that's there of what each piece of equipment costs.
He said a time and material thing. Is that what you didn't hear?
Yeah, and that's about where we were going to have, we're not in the circumstances of, we're not in here.
I know. Please.
Sorry, I'm getting used to this.
It's okay. Yes, it's all right, Shannon. Dan still had the floor.
Thank you. And that was a whole circumstance that we didn't want to go off of time and material. We wanted to set price. And there are other people that would bid that stuff. So that's why them circumstances need to be depicted on that. This is, like I say, that was a year ago that this motion was made.
Yep.
And we still haven't gotten the price.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I thought Mr. Hag made a comment in when he said that we should go ahead and that there was no need for Chuck to bid it.
If I recall, maybe it was because of dollar amount?
Exactly.
Now, if you want to maintain the competitive aspect of it, but you're right, from a statutory requirement, it is under, frankly, I think probably two exceptions. One is that it's under the requisite amount, but it's also performed by somebody who's familiar with the infrastructure and therefore is somewhat specialized in the task.
Chuck?
It kind of falls under the in-house thing, you know? I mean, I do have a contract with them. And we've learned in past experiences bringing outside contractors in, what it costs, and it is horrendous. And this is definitely not going to be a total cost to the project. Probably it's going to be in the $6,000 range. They're giving us, me, whatever, quite a rate, because they've done this work in town. There's no mob involved on either party, them or myself. And so it will be done at the least expense to get it done and end the story.
And when did you say that might be done?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Very good. Thank you. All right. Streets, streetlights, what do we have?
We're still poking away at the streets, the last round, of course. And as I had pointed out before, the anatomy of a pothole, and I'm still working, but money on getting road oil from tipping and sealing, that any material that goes in these potholes has to have an oil base, because it's, what happens, and I explained it, and explained it to them cotton out, that with no water repellent in these patches, when the water gets in the patch hole, it soaks it up and goes right down. So if there's a water repellent mixed with whatever you put in there, like I stated before, whether it's horse feathers or whatever, that material has to have oil mixed with it. And if it is packed, it will stay. Like I said, we're working on it as we can. We've been very tied up with other things that are going on in town. And the lagoon is a big project. I've worked with the engineer. And the levee that we're working on at this point in time has been there since 1961. And we've had several issues with high water, and that V ditch is full of dirt. So by the dirt being put in there in a flood situation, it's water-packed, so to speak. Water's used a lot of time for compaction, flooding, ditches, and things like that. So this stuff's coming out very, very tough. Not to mention that it's had many, many years of seeds, grass, weeds, everything growing in it. So it's kind of like peeling sod. So we're kind of limited on how you can clean this bitch. We've tried several things, and we're more than halfway to it now. And Anthony's very adamant about using this ditch on this discharge this time and in the future, because once that water is cleaned, we're going to be using that ditch to disperse the water. So it's kind of a double whammy that we're going to be able to use it for the immediate discharge and in the future. So he's adamant about using it. At one point in time, years back, we were going to tear it out of there, and it turns out that it's going to be beneficial to use it now. So that's kind of where that's at. I'm not making any excuses, but we're only two guys now. We used to be just one guy a year ago. So we're kind of putting the fires out, and every morning that I darken the door, there's another damsel in distress somewhere. So we tried to put out the fires as going along, as well trying to get routine work done. We have not tackled the stop signs yet, on the height, and that kind of stuff. That's something that I'm sure you'll write a work order on, that we'll go around and raise or lower them, whatever has to be done. I've not seen the specs of what height they're supposed to be. So we're...
Did you notice that there were some new stop signs put on?
No, I hadn't really. But I know that the cost of those things, when you get them, they're about $150 to $170 a piece for a stop sign.
Before Rich Zucker left his position, he gave permission to Lawn to take some of their older stop signs and replace them with some of ours that were almost, almost not visible to what he even said. And so Lawn has done that. And so if you notice, when you're, when you are at that project, that is why they have been replaced and why the faded ones are gone.
Doesn't even know what the height is.
Seven feet.
Didn't even need, didn't even need one. Seven feet.
The minimum height is seven feet from ground to the bottom of the sign. The height protects pedestrians and bicyclists from head injuries and ensures the sign is visible in areas where more vehicles and equipment that can block views. Rural areas, the minimum height is five feet. From the ground to the bottom of the sign, the height allows visibility around obstacles like snow and vegetation.
And what is that height that's above it?
Five for rural areas, seven for cities. What are we?
What are we?
We have one over there that's tall.
Yeah, that, yeah, that one's definitely not correct. So, Board, do you have a preference? Seven, five? Excuse me, Shannon, go ahead.
Six and a half. No, I just thought I'd say thank you, Lawn.
You're welcome.
Opinions? Seven, five, six, split in the middle? What do you think? Excuse me, Mark, go ahead.
In town, most all are seven feet, because you're in a right-of-way, people walk under it. Five feet poses a hazard to...
Even for me.
They do that.
Seven feet it is then, Chuck.
To the bottom of the...
To the bottom of the sign, from the ground level to the bottom of the stop sign.
We may have to extend some of the posts.
I see that, yes. Especially that one that's way down there. Yep.
That's a one.
Okay.
Just leave the ground out of Robin.
Yeah.
Lower the ground.
Lower the ground. Thank you, everyone. Let's see here.
Well, it's streetlights.
Yep.
I'm in my usual realm, and I've not seen anything that's in trouble. Like I mentioned in the last meeting, there is a couple of signs that are, or lights that are in town. And if they're tied to a transformer, chances are pretty good they're planted. REA requires that any streetlights come out of the transformer that's on the ground for, because there's no meters on it. So consequently, we pay so much a month for each light. And that reflects in the bills that she gives, the lights and their locations and how much, and all that stuff. So to my knowledge, all the lights are upgrading, and we do have one or two of the big lights in stock. I usually try to keep. But once we get all the yellows gone, and these lights are expensive. They're, they're worth from $700 to $2,000 bucks. So having one laying around is, may not, because they're readily available. It takes a little time to get them in, but we don't stock them in Rapid City. So that's another issue. So I mean, it's kind of one of those things that we're just playing it by ear.
I will comment on that, and that is basically to tell everybody that, you know, if you drive through Rapid Valley, there are no streetlights. It's very nice for looking at stars, but it's not very nice for the law enforcement and for safety purposes. In the past, we have, excuse me, in the past, we have made the decision to, to put streetlights in our town. That is still where we're at. The public can change that, should they desire that that bill be way less by proposing a change in ordinance or, but that is up to the people. As of right now, we are, we have voted in the past to have streetlights for law enforcement purposes and for safety purposes. But it is an expense, and it is an expense that adds to your water bills, because all the bills have to be paid. All of the towns' bills get paid with those funds, the sewer and water funds. I still believe that they are a good thing to have in town. I, and I love looking at the stars, but I can do that when I go out and go camping, too. So that was just information for everybody.
I think we've only had one complete light that was put in, and that was, was a request on Wickley Street, and that light has been installed and is in operation.
Yep, thank you.
So I think that's it on lights.
Okay.
Water, Anthony touched on that a little bit with the RT system and the people that are doing the perforating and stuff, you know. We're looking, it's been very fortunate that Anthony and I have been discussing most everything that's involved in the street, because he is a newcomer, obviously, and together all the information, pertinent information that he can on water, sewer, and everything that goes on in the town. I have a lot of confidence in him. He's a very grateful boy, and he's nice to work with. So that takes care of that. We are proposing some issues on the water situation, and of course, we went into the sewer and what's going on there. And I think he's proposing good, sound advice on what should be done. And still dealing with some smell and some turnover and the repairs were done to the pond doctor, and it is definitely making a difference. I've been down there. I go try to go down all the, once a week, sometimes twice, whatever, taking care of them all and whatever needs to be done. The color is very important in those ponds, because that gives you an idea of what's going on.
And how is the color right now?
Well, it has improved quite a bit.
Good.
These warmer days and rain, it's fresh water in there. And as it dries out and the heat becomes higher, on a 90-degree day with a 15 mile an hour wind, you can physically, physically see those ponds dropping from evaporation, because of the openness of them and the wind action across them. And, you know, it's, it works, you know. And I think his proposal on what he wants to do here is, is going to work. And it's something that should have been done a long, long time ago. We've kind of ignored the lagoon, the cells, and one thing or another. And, you know, it turns out that land design was very, very, very cheap compared to what we've encountered in the last year.
Very, 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 very. You can't even say enough varies.
Yes, I can't say enough varies.
That's right.
So I think I've pretty much covered everything, you know. I mean, we're still banging away on little things and everything, because occasionally there's a rabbit that commits suicide, and I have to address that, address that or something, you know. So the work is never ending.
We know, and we appreciate that you're there to do it. Thank you very much. Jerry?
Yes, on the lights.
Yes.
Right now, I have the only yard light on Folsom. It's on lot 2, yeah, lot 240, address 240. The power company's going to be coming out and putting a pole right on the boundary between 240 and 260. And then at that point in time, that we bring in power there, the power will come down. One will go to 240, one will go to 260. And at that point in time, where that yard light is, that yard light will come out. And so I don't know if you guys, when they put that pole up, want to address it with them, because that might be the time and the least cost to do it, is have a city-owned light at that point, because that is the only light back there.
Okay. Chuck, would you look at that, please? Or have you?
I can. There's a light that's right behind here that was on a private lot. And I believe that light should be removed or it's not in operation. So I don't know that it's pertinent to a street or anything of that nature. It was a security light for the property owner. And it needs to be addressed, either taken out or moved or something.
I think when, as I recall, we have looked into this before, and the private lights that were installed, it's costing us nothing for having them there. And if the new owners want to, want the light, they can call the power company and have it turned on and have it billed to themselves personally. So in my opinion, I would think that the pole should just stay in case a new homeowner would like that security. So, and it's just a minute, for all the board members to drive by and look at what Jerry is talking about, I would appreciate that, and everybody's opinion, please. Jerry?
Yes, because the pole will be the one that we're at, because that's where the power goes to now. That pole will be going away, the light will be going away. So I just wanted to bring that up, Jerry. People walk that a lot, and they're going, all of a sudden, they're not going to see a light.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Shannon?
I'm just going to ask if there's already, if there is a light on the corner of North Third and Folsom?
No.
No?
Mine's the only light up there.
On the corner?
It's on the next lot over. It's one hundred and thirteen feet from the, from Third Street.
That was two forty or two sixty?
That's two, that's two fifty.
Two fifty?
Between two forty and two sixty. They go by twenty, that's two forty.
Right, and I'm talking about the one that goes down the hill to the park. Is there on that corner?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Dan?
And I know when they were removing lights and taking them off of properties, definitely want to check with the property owners before that's allowed. We had a big skirmish with Black Hills Electric over that. And just going through and doing them off device and caused a problem. And then back on the streets, something that was brought up when we were putting material in them potholes is that if you're using any other oils or mixtures other than what's bought from certain installations that environmentally, you could be in pretty good trouble over that situation. That's why previously it was bought from a licensed dealer for them products so that it was applied. Used in the proper form on that side. And on all the streets, I do want to remind that there was a proposal several months ago put in that was quite reasonable compared to some costs that have already occurred to repair and do all of that repair and was never taken under advisement, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll move forward from there. Nothing on the tank floor?
No, that's it on hold.
Okay. And then next would be the open work orders, which we have a copy of. And how are you, how's that going? Any of the, there's not very many on the list anymore, Chuck?
Well, we're getting away at them. Most of them are needing to pop sleep or whatever. Hopefully, when we read, we get a list of those. I've gone and seen a few that are still existing. They must still be working, but, you know. It even gets down.
Okay.
And that comes back to the same situation that these are compatible, you know, with everything.
A couple of these on here. Well, one in particular, two maybe, are because I put them on there. When you installed them, they were on, we'll just say on the back of the house. And now they've put up six-foot fences and I don't know if there's dogs in there. I don't, and I'm not going to do that. And so I realized that it's adding, in some cases, quite a lot of wire to get that out to where it's easily readable, but it is unnecessary.
We've looked at some of those and one of the drop out that we have, we can fix them, but this remote wire cannot be placed to the computer system in the head.
Really?
So if we have to run a new wire, we'll make them, we have bulk wire that will allow us to do that.
Yep. Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
I think that's it. I can't think of anything.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything on public works? All right, thank you. We'll move forward. Finance office, Jerry, that's you. Thank you.
I don't have the bank statements. I've got one issue with a payment that came across from front desk. It's not showing up on the reconciliation, so we've got to call into G-Works. I'm just waiting on them. We did receive all of our money back now that was fraudulent, so that makes me feel a lot better. And so far, and I've been checking it, trying to check about every day, and we haven't had any more, so knock on wood. But I'll have the bank statement for you at the next meeting. I did attend finance officer school last week at the Spearfish. It was good. And then today I went to budget training and that was exceptional. I learned a lot, so I was very glad. And that was just in Rapid, so. As far as the bank proposals, I have three of them. I just got them on like last Friday. So I really don't have a time to like compare them. I don't want to just jump into something and I want to see what the costs are. So I'd like to bring that back to the next meeting as well.
Very good. Any questions on finance from the board? Okay. Oh, that takes us to new business, Hermosa Arts and History Association. Shelley?
Thanks for having me. Haha Hermosa Arts and History Association is going to do a Christmas carnival, big soup and dessert in the Hermosa School with Santa's shop, whatever. And Haha members are going to the Huxter to talk to those vendors to invite them to the December eighth vendor fair. So like Joan said, you guys kind of need to have a set plan of who gets charged for vendors and who doesn't. So they are going to ask if they have a fee to the town to have their crafts that are fair. We have done this Christmas carnival many years. We've had very good success. And the town has never, ever come to ask us for a fee for those vendors. We charge them ten dollars just for setting up the Lutheria and giving them a table. That's just our little fundraiser that we do. So I'm just kind of concerned if they are going to get charged. They do give you tax money from their sales because I had made sure they signed the paper, they got the paperwork. They send it to Pier. If they pay it, it's not up to Haha. And I know you have gotten tax revenue from them. So we just need to know what we tell these vendors on Saturday.
Okay. I would propose that we treat them the same way we have all the other vendors for this year, which is no charge for, that's what we did with the this weekend's deal, and it's what we asked for from the community center also, as I recall. And as I'm feeling, it should be the same. Go ahead, Cal.
I'd just like to ask the question, seeing as it's at the school, is there a jurisdiction issue here? Just being, just asking that question, I'm not sure if there is one or not.
I don't know what you mean by jurisdiction.
Well, is that under the purview of the school district or is it?
We have to rent this school. We have to pay to have our event there.
Okay.
Seems like any other. Are you, I guess I'll ask how everybody feels, if they should be treated the same as the other vendors for this year? Donna?
Well, they are going to be, we're going to get revenue from them.
I worry.
Thank you. Excuse me, Donna.
What did you say?
Got a water leak?
I guess they have a key.
Just that, you know, I mean, we are getting the tax revenue from them, so I would say that should be sufficient. I mean, you know. You can money people to death and then they don't want to come and see you.
Yeah. A lot of these people, it is their business and some do it as a hobby, but most of them is their business, so. They like to see more profit in their pockets and that's what we try to do too.
Opinion, Vicki?
I think we should just do the same as always. It's a good event. Leave them alone and let them go.
Cal?
Yeah, just, I would just go along with whatever we were doing last time for this event. I don't see any reason to charge them extra.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. We would like a listing of the events ahead of time, if that's possible.
The events?
Events, whatever is happening, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, be nice. Then we can share it at our meetings also.
Fabulous.
Shannon?
I might be, maybe something to add with, along with abatements to your work session.
Work session list.
Other precedents for it throughout the year. It makes sense only to continue with that. Wouldn't be fair to charge anybody at this point. And then, you know, look at it and see what type of vendors we should be or why we even have it.
Yep, good point. Thank you.
Rather than just, you know, touching that aside every time.
Okay. B is gravel on Tower Road. Bid process is being complied. Inconclusive of the North Seventy-Nine Agreement.
I have talked to Wade. I'm waiting for the contract items so we can proceed with each one. And he was in Pier and I haven't gotten it from him yet.
Okay. So pending until further information. Thank you, Vicki, for working on that. Custer County Commissioners Meeting update. That's, I did go. It was, there wasn't very much that concerned the town of Hermosa. They, again, you know, they go through the primary elections and all that stuff. They did not have any commissioners that changed this time. Their, their protocol is they do three, one year, two, one year, and then they don't have any the next year. So that's how they conduct their meetings with the changeover. The planning department was, had a lot to say and they are going through ordinances again. And welcomed anybody that would like to go and participate with that. Anybody from the town. It doesn't have to be a board member. They would like input. And so if anybody has that desire, the meeting this week is on Thursday at eight AM. They have been going rather quickly. I've been out of them generally by ten o'clock. And then they go into executive session and also into their work sessions. They do them right after their meetings. They do all of their meetings, or almost all of their meetings during the day. We have chosen to have our meetings at night because we feel that it's easier for the public to make it to the meetings. There again, that could be changed at any time also. But that would take a lot of recommendation from the citizens. Their sheriff's department, they also cannot get enough help. They had one quit and, and they hired another one on, so they're still down. And they have asked for higher money. It has gone to twenty-six forty-five an hour for law enforcement in Custer County. And that, I think, is, is low by state standards even, I think. So it's just not an easy thing to fill. There's, it's become a more dangerous job and there's less people willing to do that. And we know that. We see that in our own community. And I'm grateful that they are making some rounds around our town again. That was about the size of the meeting last week, and I do plan on going again this week. They did have, Rick Wheeler is now the in charge of the museum. And they had a proposal for a new flagpole and it was ten thousand dollars for a flagpole, the height and size that they need. I just thought that was interesting, so I wanted to tell you all that. Things just to run a town, to run a county, it's just not cheap anymore. I don't know that it ever was, but it has just gotten quite out of hand to, to do any of the little projects that we would love to have for our town. It's, it's very expensive.
Did they pass it?
They did pass it. The, they did a fundraiser and the fundraiser paid half of it and the county put in the other half, but because it is county property.
Interesting.
So.
Yeah, everything costs.
Yeah, it does. That was, that was basically all for the meeting that month and we'll see her that week and we'll, like I said, I'll be going on Thursday for this meeting too, so. Surplus items, playground equipment and chain link fence. Do we have anything new to add to those items? Any more thought or process thinking on that? Dan?
The only thing we talked about last time was the possibility of the chain link fence still being used for the water pump down there and the bids we had that would, were acceptable to use it. And we could use up most of all that now.
Okay.
Could use around the public park area.
That's been discussed. It's all been discussed. The biggest issue.
Inside of it, there by the.
By the creek or by the?
Yeah, to kind of separate it from where it gets mowed.
The biggest issue with that is the cost. And the discussion of whether it's affordable to use what we own or to just buy all new and with the contractor and have it done. And it's, it is fairly close. It's been two years since we had those estimates. Dan?
Yeah, okay.
This is something that I guess we need to look into again to see if the prices have changed for the product or, or for the installation of it, you know. I don't think we can just make a decision without the new costs with it being two years ago.
Was this to declare them surplus or you were just discussing?
It was at one point to declare it, but we did not get the vote on that. So I think it's just a matter of, like I said, researching it some more. That's how I feel about it. Is everybody in agreement with me or?
I'll make a motion, table it.
Table it? Donna makes a motion that we table that?
Can we change the way it's written on there for the next meeting so it doesn't?
It would be nice, wouldn't it?
Look like it already is surplus?
Yeah, yeah, yep. So I would entertain a motion to just take that off of the agenda and put that also on research. And if it needs to be a work session research, we will. If it, if we can do it without the work session, that's fine too.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Donna seconds that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, Kathy, I did see your hand go up and then I forgot to call on you.
I was thinking on the playground equipment, you were going to check to see if the insurance.
Right.
And I did and they said they would insure it.
Oh, okay.
They would, yep.
Very good. Okay. Okay, the rework of ordinance fifty point zero two on the meters. That was still the discussion of whether the to, the town should own the meters or the homeowners should own the meters. And that discussion has been back and forth. Chuck believes that the town should own them. And the, Kent, you said that the citizens actually own them in most towns, but with the town having the right to.
Yes, if the town has the ownership versus who pays for it, it can be two different things. But, but from the practical matter, the town directs the type of meter used, where it's essentially generally going to be installed, how it's going to be read, all those things. So they exert all sorts of, or all of the ownership attributes. So if the town owns them in the name, they don't have titles, obviously, but if they, if they own the meter, but the, the user, citizens charge X dollars for a new meter install, I understand we already did that on the construction. It's, it is, it is typical that if there's a repair or replacement, then that is the responsibility of the homeowner. To Chuck's point that he made last week or last time was that. To Chuck's point that he made last week, or last time, was that having, you might have a revolt on your hands and start charging people all of a sudden to cross the board for a meter. Well, you won't have that, in my opinion, if, if it's just done as they're replaced. Because currently Chuck made a wise decision, you know, eight to 10 years ago, whatever that was, so that they can be retrofitted quite easily with new reading devices. And because of that, maybe it's just these reading devices that are the cost. But, and that can be done for, on a deferred basis. If, for, for instance, if we have grant money that's part of this or something like that, that's a different story, that should be taken into consideration. Just because you have a source for something that can be used for things like meters, doesn't, might not necessarily mean that, okay, we just not utilize a, a contribution from the owner, from the homeowner. It really goes like this, but if they, if they, if the homeowner is required to pay, it can be put on their water bill over the next 12 months. You know, it's nothing very, that they, they won't, won't be a hardship. But I do think it's a, it's a, it's a better precedent to have the homeowner take, you know, be the payer for it. Not necessarily the owner. It has to remain to some degree it's the city's property so they can trade it in when it needs to. I think from a practical standpoint, ownership stays in the city. From a, from a actual standpoint of, of the cost, who endures that, then it's the homeowner, just my thought.
Jerry, you had your hand up?
Yes, in April of '23, I think it was the first meeting, uh, the last lawyer made the determination that looking at the ordinance and actually he made a recommendation into change to the ordinance and that ordinance was changed, is that the homeowners will pay for the meters. They won't just be given to them. And since then, there's been places where people have purchased meters and they own the meters now. So that has to be kind of taken into consideration. But I, I agree with what the, it should be part of whatever you're doing to do business, whether it's a permit to put a new house in or whatever. You get charged, you get charged for the meter, but the city owns it. And I think that's the way to go and that'll be different than the way the ordinance reads now, so.
Jill?
I think, I think we need to consider this pretty carefully, at least in my particular box that's being gored. Because I have a lot of meters out there. And, and if we're suddenly in the position of having to replace all of those meters, it, it comes to a pretty penny. And so you know how it is, I, bless, I'd like to really talk about it a little bit before we jump into making a, you know, a, a wide sort of, uh, determination.
Yeah, and that, what, what, and my thing is that determination was made in April of '23. And that was what the response back from the city lawyer to my lawyer was, and that's what the response was. And since then, you know, I, I bought one of the meters in, that it's gonna be one of his meter pretty soon. But it just needs to be changed, ordinance needs to be changed.
Yes, it's another one that needs to be put on a work session. Dan, did you have something that I see your hand up?
Yeah, I just, the last time we talked about it, that we were going to move this to a work session and take it off the meter agenda.
Agenda.
And then consider the more home park fees to what they're being charged, a yearly fee for the meters and ownership of the meters and then the residential, to whether we're commercial or following the cap sizes.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
One more thing, Dan. Uh, time, date, and rather than ambiguous, move it to a work session, is that, is that open to the public?
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess, I don't need to know right now.
Right.
But when will that time and, and date be set up?
I will make sure.
To address that particular topic.
I will make sure that you know that.
Thank you.
Please put that on your list, um, for that particular work session to call and notify you, please. Um, all right.
I'd like to kick that dead horse a little farther though.
Keep kicking.
Just, I totally understand what you're saying, sir, right? But that financial blow would be almost completely mitigated by only having to pay as your meters fail or as the improvements for the readout take place. I think for the citizens to think they don't have to have any cost associated with their meter is, is not, not warranted or just. And it's a business expense, believe me.
I got plenty of those.
For our apartment, yeah, you do, for our apartment complex, 30, it's, it's a monthly charge by Black Hills Co-op, I think of like $30. It's, it's obscene per month, ongoing meter fee. So it's, yeah, I, I, I feel your pain, believe me. But I don't think it's gonna be real bad, especially if it was gonna put on a delayed payment plan and this. And it's not gonna be all at once, so when you look at the practicality of the situation, it is what it is.
Thank you, Ken.
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to remove and reword the surplus items to a work session. That's 18D along with 18E, rework ordinance 50.02 to a work session. And also adding review of the mowing and nuisance.
Ordinance?
Ordinance to that work session. Something like, there's something else you wanted on the work session. Oh, well, maybe a separate motion, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see you add back in trustee input at the end. Whether it's published or not, I think it deserves to be there, that's just my opinion.
I was already gonna do that, Shannon, but thank you for your comment. All right, is, was there anything else that needed to be removed that anybody can see right off all the, um?
What is?
All of 10 will have.
What is 3A and B? Is that, is that there too, like a declaration of?
Kind of, yes, just a reminder. Um, all of 10 would be removed, all of 11 would be removed. 12 goes on to the next meeting. Um, at least the assignment of committees, the rest of that will be removed. That looks like it's about it, doesn't it? Oh, 18A can be removed. I believe that's all, so if somebody would make the motion to remove all those items?
Yeah, as amended.
Okay, seconded? Cal will second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Vicki, was that an aye or an nay? An aye? Thank you. That brings us to, um, comments from the citizens. Totally expected, Jerry, what is yours?
What I'd like to say is, thank you very much for, for Cal and Mrs. Harris there for coming and putting up beyond the board. And also want to say thank you for your very good input at the first meeting.
Thank you, Jerry. Joan?
I would just like to second, but thank you Talon, that was really nice of them to do all that, it's a lot of work.
Thank you, okay. Dan, go for it.
I also wanna thank the new board and the freshness of the board and I look forward to energy and moving forward and getting some stuff accomplished by them.
Thank you. Connie?
It was a very good meeting. I would like to, to talk about the mosquito spraying. If there's some way that we could notify the public before that happens? Like Saturday, we're walking and mosquito spray goes by, we are buried in this, in it, breathing it. It's summer, I remember last year, I liked to sit with my windows open and it goes by 11 o'clock and it just drifts right in your window. That's a safety hazard for people. I mean, we post on the community page, there should be a way that you can go out and say they're gonna spray that evening. I would think for people's health, it really needs to be addressed when it's gonna happen.
I will comment on that right now. It is, um, it is not a problem for you to breathe it, a little bit of it. Granted, you shouldn't, you should not be putting your face in it and breathing it a lot, but it is a fairly safe thing and.
I don't think it's psychosize safe, but, or maybe it's.
I understand what you're saying Connie, but I also know that in this case, it is not possible to notify people exactly when because you never know what the weather's gonna be like. And there are qualifications to be met for him to be able to spray. One is, uh, moisture levels, um, the wind, it has to be at the right thing. It has to be either in the morning early or in the evening hours or nighttime hours. And so all's I can say to that is, I listen for it. When I hear it, I go and I shut windows and I bring my dogs in and I make sure I'm in. I know that's not poss- so possible or easy to do when you're already sleeping or when you're already walking. Um, I believe I know which night you are speaking about and that was one of the earliest times I've ever known him to spray. He normally doesn't do that.
It was in the morning, like between 8 and 9 in the morning.
Okay, well, that, that, um, he, it's not normally at that time, it's generally later or earlier than that. And, but because, um, he had had several complaints about mosquitoes and how bad they were.
I get it, I want, I want to cause problems.
No, I'm not, I know that.
Maybe there is a way that they can notify the public to shut windows or?
I don't believe there is, but I will talk to him about that. Jerry?
Uh, the question of the safety of it came up. And any chemical that you buy comes with a material safety data sheet. And if, you know, either make that maybe in the newsletter one time, and just the material safety data sheet or make that material safety data sheet available here in the office or someone to look at. Because when he uses that chemical, he has to have that materials, material safety data sheet in his possession. And I think if that was presented, and then instead of, you know, while Connie thinks it's a problem, you don't think it's a problem, look at the material sa- safety data sheet and know explain what it is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm talking on, um, the Hermosa Connects Huskers event this Saturday. Um, we were wondering if the town had anybody come in and get some type of a vendor fee through the town.
I think we had two food vendors, I believe is all we had.
Okay, so are they affiliated with the Huskers? Did, because we kind of have rumors that individuals of the town are letting vendors come to their home to put food, sushi, vendors on their property.
I didn't, I mean, I don't, I don't work with that, I know the one, the last one that came in was a Mexican food and then we had a other food truck a couple weeks ago that came in.
It's either Mexican.
A Mexican and then I don't know what the first one was, it was a food truck too, but it was.
It was the day of the Mexican.
Yeah.
Not the person, the food.
The food.
Right. Okay, well, that's kind of sad to hear since it was Hermosa Connects event, that they should go to them to give a vendor's permit, but I don't know how to prevent that.
And you don't know where they were?
Jill has, she'll do, I mean, I can, I can get you the information, Shelley, like.
And we'll, we'll look at that.
Well, it's kind of late now, as long as they pay for their fee, vendor's fee, you know, because the Connects people will go to vendors to see if they have the permit. And if they don't, they will be shut down.
Okay. Is that what you?
Yeah, I was gonna say you're gonna have to check them that morning and make sure they do. And like you said, if they don't, then tell them to leave.
Okay, Deb?
Oh, just to nip the rumor, we aren't having anybody on our property. That was brought up at one of your meetings over there, so just, uh, I've nipped that. It was, it was, you just had that pause for a second.
Thank you, Deb. Shannon?
The motion that was amended to include all that stuff that went to a work session, did we make sure we included the vendor's ordinance on that list? I think that was the one we were forgetting.
Yeah, good point. Erin?
I got one for a work session, live streaming the board meetings.
Okay. Worth discussion, thank you. Samantha?
What did you say?
Any other public comment?
Well, I just wanted.
I'm sorry, I can't see you, I have to move my chair.
We're kinda laughing back here, 'cause I couldn't raise it. Uh, anyway, no, it's been a great meeting, I really appreciate all the work everybody's doing and I just wanna encourage people, and I also wanna say, if you want somebody to sit there and scroll up the business so that it's on, I'm happy to sit back there and do that for the next meeting, so.
Good choice.
There you go, you got it.
Yeah, I like to work behind the scenes, so.
So do we need a sheet for you to be behind or, you know, what do they? Whatever, partitions? Okay. On that note, I, I would like to add trustee comment. And, um, I would like it to be fairly short and fairly sweet. I'll, I'll start, Shannon?
Thanks for adding that back in.
You're welcome.
Dan, it's been a pleasure working with you all these years and don't you dare think that you're gonna miss another meeting? Just be sitting up front instead, we still need all your expertise. You know, a lot of stuff hasn't been here that long. So it's kind of sadness that I have to take this seat, but I wanna work with you.
Proud of you too.
Okay, Donna?
I don't have nothing to say.
Okay, Cal?
I'd just like to say I look forward to working with this board and getting our projects done and we can hopefully, uh, move on into the future.
Thank you. Vicki?
I thought it had to be on the agenda in order to have trustee input, but again, we're making an exception and setting a precedent, once again.
I'll make sure it's on the agenda next time?
Shouldn't have been discussed this time because it was not on the agenda. As Mr. Alsworth has pointed out to me multiple times, if it's not on the agenda, you don't discuss it.
However. I am with Shannon, the fact that we are all citizens of this town, which gives us all the right to speak, speak under the citizens' one. However, I will make it trustee input for the next meeting. I have a little input, mine is that my main focus will be on getting the water and sewer systems up, done and running. And, um, of course, we will handle situations that are health and safety welfare issues and get those taken care of. I hope that, um, we can move forward positively and all work together. I would like to suggest at this point, and I will probably, um, add this to a work session and, or to a meeting, public input, I think is very important. And I believe that, uh, the public can volunteer their time as well in meetings. If, if you have something, let's just say it's the pet ordinance for, for exist, for example. If, if you have a passion for that, I would like to see you at our work sessions when we discuss those things. I would like your opinion and possibly we will start some committees and let's get the public more involved. Let's, let's be here, let's work together. We all live here, we all want the best for our town. That being said, the best is different in other people's eyes. Everybody has their own opinions and that's what makes America great, that we're allowed our opinions and that we can discuss them and shape them into what we need and want. And so I'm gonna ask the public to come forward, uh, I will make sure. I will make sure that the information gets out there so that you'll be notified, uh, when we'll have those meetings. And, um, hopefully we can come together on, on a lot of these projects. I wanna thank you, each and every one of you, for attending, for voicing your opinions and, um, I look forward-
I think the motion is meaning to be a giant.
And at that note, I will accept your motion and take a second. And the time being eight fifty-six for adjournment. Do I have a second?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you all so-